All right, so I am, you ready? Okay, I am calling this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Long Grove, for July 27th, 2021 to order. As village president, however, I've determined that due to the conditions relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's only feasible to make the village hall accessible to a limited number of the public to attend this meeting in person. In-person attendance by members of the public is being limited to those who have pre-registered and pre-registration was made available on a first-come, first-served basis as set forth in the village board agenda. For those who have not pre-registered for in-person attendance, tonight's public access to this meeting has been made available through the Zoom platform as set forth on the meeting agenda. The members of the village board also have connected to the platform to allow the public to hear the open session proceedings. I am going to, also, this meeting is being recorded. That was not in my announcement. I want to make sure you all know that. So I'm going to take the roll call. And trustee Micho and trustee Barowski, you, we have to have a quorum here first before we can allow you to enter the meeting. So please let me know if you can be heard and I'll go ahead and start with trustee O'Reilly. Are you here?
Oh, I'm here.
Can you be heard? All right, trustee O'Connor.
President.
President, we can hear you. Trustee Tanucci.
I am here.
Is he a trustee yet?
He is, and so we're going to explain that, and I'll just go ahead and do it right now. He is officially taken his oath of office, so he is a trustee, and I'm going to ceremonially swear him in.
What? What do you mean?
I'm gonna, just leave that alone, so. I can't say that word. All right, trustee Tanucci, are you here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then I am going to be the, President Jacob, I will basically establish the quorum, and I am here. So now, I would like a motion to allow trustee Micho to attend remotely. Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor. That is a roll call vote. Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
And then President Jacob is an aye. All right, trustee Micho, you're now in the meeting. All right, welcome. And now, I would like to make a motion to allow trustee Barowski to attend remotely. Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor. That is a roll call. So trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
I can actually do, I don't really have to vote. Trustee Micho.
She's muted.
Do you want to vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so Chris, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
You're in. All right, next order of business right away I'm gonna do is, is I am going to swear Denise Rosenquist in, if I don't trip over the cord, and I guess I'll, if I haven't learned, I'll go this way, as our deputy clerk. Okay, let's get to the pulse of the speakerphone. I think what I'm gonna do is do it this way, raise your right hand. Aye Denise Rosenquist.
Aye Denise Rosenquist.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of deputy clerk.
Of the office of deputy clerk.
Of the Village of Long Grove, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Of the Village of Long Grove, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. All right, okay. And I'm gonna do the, I'm gonna formally swear in Tetteh Nucci next. If you could raise your right hand. All right, we need a picture of this. Aye, Tetteh Nucci.
Aye, Tetteh Nucci.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of trustee of the Village of Long Grove.
Of trustee of the Village of Long Grove, Illinois, to the best of my ability. Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hopefully you got pictures. Thank you.
Where did you get your clerk? Why did you change?
Denise Rosenquist, another hat.
The deputy clerk is someone who could take on the roles of the, a clerk if the elected clerk is not available.
If Sherry was, well, Sherry still is. Sherry's on vacation. We have two.
Yeah, and we have a lead on a replacement village clerk, so we're, we've got somebody that I think will be good, so.
I don't want, I don't want Sherry fighting all of this now. If it doesn't work out, we should consider perhaps paying someone?
Yep, I think we have, I think we have an option, so I'm feeling good, so. Hey, so I skipped the Pledge of Allegiance, does anyone want to say a Pledge of Allegiance? Do you want to do that? We'll do it a little out of order. We had some procedural things to do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people, and to the citizens. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do we have any homeowners association here? Ah, right, we do. So you are from?
Los Avine.
Los Avine, that's why I knew Lori. No, you're not Lori, but.
No, Carol.
Carol, yes, yeah.
Right, right, right. Los Avine is good, no complaints about our firm, and if there hasn't been any, nobody's come to us to voice any of their opinions, so whatever you're doing is up to power.
Yes, I remember the manure stuff, right? So, yes.
For years.
For years, yeah.
Days, and we've done it. But we've had some leaders, three years, a lot of young families, thank God, coming to our development. And even though we're small development people, still try to drive through our development. And lately, it's been becoming an issue more and more. It's got the other day, somebody was driving through our development, going sixty miles an hour, and I mean, I, I was ballistic, and I probably, at that point, would anybody call the police? I didn't, I mean, because I didn't know who he was going to, or whatever, but I was ballistic and called them out on it, and I don't think it will happen again. But the concern of the homeowners, especially ones that have the young kids, wonders, and I have brought this up years ago, if we could get any speed bumps, I don't know, what's the thought?
Well, I mean, it's, it's always been, because your, your roads are public roads, right?
Our roads are public roads.
Right, and so it was, it's always been that that's something that the village, for liability reasons and so forth, has never put those in, right? Yet if they're, some of the private HOAs, and I happen to be one, which I hate them, that has some speed bumps, right? So, in fact, some kids in our subdivision decided to take them out.
Yeah.
So, and they chopped down the sign, the speed sign too, right next to it too, but, yeah, and I'm sure somebody in our neighborhood, but.
Uh-huh.
So I don't know, it's something that, that would be a policy thing, I mean, something that we would want to look at at some point in time in the future. But where were they, how are they cutting through? Because they don't go anywhere, right? How?
They just drive through or whatever.
Right.
I know, they're not going anywhere.
They're good, it is, nowhere to go.
I don't know if they can't read the sign.
They're visiting someone.
Or if they can't read the sign saying that there's no outlets, you know?
Right, yeah.
Driving over, you know, our grass, but yeah, okay. That's not an issue. It's the young kids or somebody is driving too fast. I mean, this person even admitted he was going sixty miles an hour.
Wow.
You know, it's, it's a problem, it, since the pandemic began, I've noticed on the roads, in my car, that it isn't just the kids, it's honestly, God, it's honestly, God, middle-aged self-respect in women and men. And their, their boats are not being patrolled the way they used to be. People, I'm going seventy and fifty-five, right?
What, in Rota?
People tell me, oh, yeah, right, not even blinking. But again, they jarge in and out all the time, you know, it's just, you. But they do it because they can. And all the, all the rules are based on compliance. It's not based on having a cop on every corner, and it's just not being real compliant. I mean, they go down Indian Creek Road, oh my God, and Long Grove Road, yeah, it's the same thing, yeah, checkers, I, I, I only kill deer frequently, puts up the signs your speed is, and it does slow down some people. Some people, some people give it the finger, you know, it's just a flag inside, they go by, put a finger on it. That's cool, yeah, you're cool, you know, but, but it seems to me that it's getting worse, and, and I've read research that says it's the residents who figure, I live here, I can drive these speed I want. Well, no, don't stop that. I mean, we had a new, somebody that came into our development, you know, young couple, and we had complaints from our neighbor saying that he was going at least twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, and I texted him and told him, and he, of course, that I would, wouldn't ever do that. But anyways, I said, you know, just think about what you're doing. A lot of times, I tell my husband, you know, I mean, you think you're not driving fast, but, you know, twenty miles an hour comes up, you know, like that. So, you know, people just have to be aware, especially now when our development has so many young children. You know what, I'll make sure we get that, get a reminder in, in the newsletter, that it's that time of year when kids are out of, and, and there are more kids, and. I mean, we have families that have put out those plastic signs, oh, yeah, slow down, you know, every time. But I'll make sure we get that. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It was a liability reason, that's what it is.
With the snowplows?
No, just for people driving over them, so.
Really? They could, what's the?
Just don't see them and you wreck your car or whatever else, and, or hurt somebody, hurt yourself.
Snowplows do have a problem with.
Yeah, but there are, no, I mean, there are streets, you know, that have, I don't know, what are trying to, what are trying to say, speed bumps?
Yeah, but they're private roads. Yeah, so private roads, right, yeah, so.
They are, they're not private, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the Sheriff's Department, I'll have a discussion with them tomorrow, and ask them if they can increase some controls, if nothing else.
They're wonderful.
To determine.
Absolutely, they couldn't be any better. They're by our development all the time. That's why they're never in mine. Oh, oh, they're, well, I give them, I think in brownies. We're always asking them to do that, because if it's old mechanic, it's everywhere.
Yep.
It's everywhere, it's not.
Well, so, I mean, that's something we can look at, that would be one of those discussions that the board would have to take up, you know, figure out.
Well, we started, sure.
You did, thank you. Anything else, or?
No, we're good, we're good, thank God.
All right, and there's no other HOAs here tonight, either, virtual?
You know, I do have another question.
Okay.
Because we're so small, our HOA is, that can flow by, yours is the same way. I mean, we go by the village, whatever, we don't have like a formal bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Do we still need to register to the state, which we all have, but I was just wondering if.
I have no idea.
I don't think you have to register to state, yeah, I don't think, yeah, why would you do that, I guess, that's.
We've been doing it for, I mean. What, you think the Secretary of State? Yeah, that's the Secretary of State, he gets ten dollars. If it's your corporation.
If you are, if you're, if you're a corporate entity, then that would be why you do that, yeah, you, you could, I mean.
So just like the RHO, I mean, we've been doing it for god knows how long, I don't know why I even am.
If you've been doing it, I, I mean, I don't know enough to give you advice, right? But if you've been doing it, I imagine it's because you are some type of corporate entity that was formed with the state, so you might want to just consult with your own, you know, guys about that.
Sometimes we get, recently, somebody called their home, and the buyer's lawyer wanted our, had some, you know, want your fees done. When did you done? What, yeah, I mean, I was, you know, I think something from forty years ago, that.
You have an informal HOA, right?
What?
You have an informal HOA.
Correct.
I mean, you.
It's informal because we've got our neighbors, our carny, you know, I mean.
Yep.
They, they, they're not together, really.
Right.
Yeah, so I, we can stop doing this.
Yep, that's what I think, right, unless.
I don't, I mean, I don't know enough to give you advice on whether or not you can stop, but you, if you've done it.
We don't, you don't care. Okay, yeah, maybe because if anybody calls and answers questions, it's always, well, whatever the village, you know.
So I think the question was, are you registered to the Secretary of State in a corporation? If you stop sending annual reported money, they will disallow the corporation, and they will legally cease to exist, if indeed you're a corporation.
That didn't sound right, Kat. That didn't sound right, but that, we'll just leave it.
You can tell this, because it's happened in the.
Sounds pretty right to me, yeah.
Yeah, it's a persona defect, it, I'll let's use that word.
Thank you.
That's what a corporation is.
She's grown more often.
All right, thank you. Carol, anything else, before I get abused more by the, by my fellow board members? Okay, thank you for being here.
Oh, good to be.
You're being here to support this young man?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't even watch him, sorry, I need to get a picture and then turn off my phone back.
I need to be rewarded.
We will, we will send them.
We'll get your pictures.
All right, so let's move right along. This is consideration of request for signage for the Wykert McKee Real Estate located at 217 Robert Park, Poffin Road.
No.
Within the B1 Historic District.
Maybe.
Now, you probably are going to recuse yourself, right?
I certainly am.
But, but don't physically leave, because then we won't have a quorum physically present, so please just abstain from participating in the discussion.
Okay. We have a chief here, the dog steward here.
Yeah, well.
You have to have a quorum physically.
Oh, okay, so you're.
Physically present.
Yeah.
All right.
So, so don't physically leave, but just, you know.
I have other questions.
So is there any questions, um, are, aren't you gonna like ask, aren't you gonna ask a lot of questions? The letters are too big, or something's wrong, you don't like the colors?
Same as they were before.
Yeah, okay. Will somebody like to make a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, all right, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Tanucci, that's a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on, no, no, no.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right. Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Barowski.
Although it's too yellow, I vote aye.
All right.
So you'll call trustee O'Reilly and she will.
Oh, okay, trustee, okay, okay, trustee.
This is trustee Tanucci's first vote.
Yep, all right. It's brave of you.
Third vote.
Who are we missing out? We get trustee Micho?
Yes, I got everybody.
All right, so it's all, so motion carried, okay, got it, all right, perfect.
Someday, somebody's gonna get my name right. I've never, from the village, I have never, ever seen my name right. My name is Wykert Real Estate McKee Real Estate.
Oh, Wykert Real Estate McKee, so it's, oh, okay, got it, yeah.
It's, it's just a thing, and, and it reminds me of a question that I was meant to ask recently, and the answer is, why don't I have a business license?
I don't know, why don't you have a business license?
Because you, the real estate profession is a state-licensed profession, so there's not local licensing.
I use this every year, I use this.
I mean, if you wish to have one, I'm sure you can apply.
It's, it's just what, it's not three or four years ago.
I'm not sure why that is, but, but because a broker's license is a state professional license, you, the village can't require you to have one.
So does that apply to hair sellers and insurance companies, or?
Yes, mm-hmm. Yeah, so the, the, our code has a procedure for a business to say, I'm exempt from local licensing because I have a state professional license, and so, I don't know why it changed for you personally three or four years ago, but that's the general reason. But if you wish that business license, please tell them.
All right.
That'll get me on the comment.
So that we don't go until 10 o'clock, even though we have a very light agenda, I'm gonna keep us moving. What do you mean? Just, just the way the agenda works out? Okay, ratification of a, the next item on the agenda is ratification of a project funding for the Midwest Sustainability Group in the amount of $10,000 from the budget line, item of 01-40-532-10, parentheses Route 53, I hope that's right, we don't have Ann here to correct me if it's not.
Fifty-three quarter.
Fifty-three quarter, okay. But we discussed this at the last meeting, we went ahead and agreed to do it, but it wasn't on the agenda properly, so now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by, I'll guess, it was moved by trustee O'Connor, and then seconded by trustee Barowski, and that's a roll call vote.
All right, trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
And trustee Barowski.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Yep, absolutely. All right, I may ask our village manager to help out with this one, but this is the next item on the agenda, discussion and consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Long Grove and the Village of Mundeline for interim planning services. And I know you did a lot of work on this, Greg, so maybe you want to just take us through what you did.
At the board meeting two weeks ago, I had requested that the board table this for two weeks, so that I had the opportunity to have discussions with Mundeline. The resident, or the IGA was being worked on by the interim manager, manager up until that point, and I didn't really have my hands in there. Concern was that the village would be hiring a community development director sooner than later, and the initial terms of the agreement were pretty firm in the sense that they would ra, they, Mundeline would rather go with a $10,834 fee per month, rather than work out an hourly fee for services that are under. Their, their issue was being able to track hours, and then they wanted to recapture some startup costs. I felt that, especially requiring to give a 30-day notice if we were in the middle of a proj, if we were in, if, if we were in the middle of this engagement, we brought on the community development director, that to be sitting out there paying $10,000, and it could be week one of our next month's engagement, we would suffer a hit financially, where we could serve ourselves better with the hourly expense. They agreed to it for a 90-day period, offering to revisit it again in 90 days, and they said they were not opposed to renewing it, those terms. We would look at it on a month-to-month basis to see how we were faring financially, if it was costing us more than $70 an hour, we could make that adjustment, whatever we needed to do. They also, the village attorney and both, and his staff, put some housekeeping language in the, in the ordinance, in the intergovernmental agreement, as far as operational reporting and some other odds and ends, which were great catches by Vic and Betsy. And as of last night, the village board and Mundeline approved the intergovernmental agreement.
I have some questions.
Yeah, please, why don't you start?
First of all, is community development director another word for a village planner?
It's going to encompass more responsibilities, but yes.
This is today's word.
It's, uh, it's not.
You can say that, though, yeah, I mean, everyone's, has one now, right? So, yeah.
Well, and, and it came up a great deal during the interviews, and, and, you know, and I even looked it up, I kind of hate to be so stupid, but it's like, what is, what is, what does that mean?
It's about quality of life in the community versus economic development, which is about the business community.
Bill Balling gave us the job description, though, so for, yeah.
I, I, I read it, and I thought it was still a little fuzzy for me.
Yep.
Okay, so with, with this particular agreement, what it says that the invoices don't have to be specific, they're just, here's, here's what you owe us this month, it's, it was in, in the agreement, that they could just, if it was a flat fee, you know, this is what you owe, maybe you have to really substantiate.
Which was a concern.
Because it's a flat fee, right? Regardless of how much or how little.
That's correct.
So on the hourly basis, it's basically timing material.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a concern regarding conflict of interest? For example, someone comes to us with a project, and Mundeline is reviewing it, and they don't know, whoa, this, this looks pretty good, you know?
If you're, if you're talking about them pilfering from us.
Well, that's another way to put it. I'm just trying to be a little more delicate.
I, you know, I have never, and I've worked a, a number of shared services agreements throughout my career, and I've never seen that happen, I'm not saying that it can't, but there, I'm certain there would be repercussions from our legal team and their, you know, and that we would challenge it. I mean, the first thing I would do is go to Vic and say, you know, we had this South 50, develop, or South 15 development project, and all of a sudden Mundeline scooped it because they were doing a review. I'd also add this, I, I, this is supposed to be temporary, so if we get 30, 60 days into it, I, you know, I don't think there's much damage that can take place, to be honest.
And think about our continuity with Mundeline.
You don't mean land, you mean like a business?
Whatever, whatever.
I mean, they.
In reading it, you know, I thought, well, okay, so where are the whole?
Yeah, that, it's a fair question, and the, at that point, at the time of a plan review, it would be a matter of public record anyway, so it, it wouldn't be confidential information, right? When someone submits a development application, the review of that application is a public record, so I suppose, from a practical perspective, their staff would know more about it than if, you know, it was just information that was available, but it, it's not giving them access to, you know, there's something that's not otherwise public, if, you know, they ask, I think.
So theoretically, a car dealership comes to us, normally would have, and, you know, Mundeline says, you know, hey, we'll, we'll give you tax-free for 10 years.
They could do that anyway.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Once, once we know about it, it's public, and anybody could make the same, I got it, okay, okay, could we not pay them that month, instead of?
Let's cross that bridge when we come.
What else you got there? What else you got?
I have one question, and that is, having a matter of meetings, is that necessary?
I, I have to go back, go back and look.
Yeah, there was, I think you had, you had them in there for that, but I think, since we're paying by the hour, I guess we pick and choose.
I think when we, we adjusted the language, when Vic gave me the last copy, it said as needed.
Oh, okay, I, I miss the as.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at the village board section.
Do you remember where?
It says that, yeah, it's in Section 3A, it says that they'll attend public meetings unless otherwise directed by Long Grove, so if we don't wish them to attend, you can ask them not to attend.
Okay, so, so we who tells, to say you don't need to be here.
And it's right here, too.
If you, if you don't see a need for their attendance, and you don't want to pay the hourly fee, then you could notify them that their attendance.
Is there a time limit on, on when you get to notify them?
We did not put that in there, no.
And Amanda and I are talking regularly, so I'm comfortable that, and, and I would give her a heads up, and quite honestly, I think, uh, Trustee O'Reilly, she would call me and say, what do you guys have for us this week, and I would just...
Yes.
I mean, we've got, it's, it's really a good dialogue.
Well, because I, I'm just thinking of 11:30.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Vic, there's always the possibility that they don't have to be at a meeting unless they're presenting something like Jill Hope used to do.
Exactly.
And they could do this.
Well, this, that's true, but, but sometimes things get, yeah.
The only two meetings we told them that, uh, their attendance was required were EC, the Architectural Commission, and EDC, which would be, which would be their normal course of business anyway.
The EDC.
As needed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jenny, do you have any comments, or?
Uh, no, actually Rita asked my one question, but, um, I just, the EDC meeting, which they probably won't need to attend, is wrong in the document because we are now the first Tuesday of the month, so I don't know if that needs to be changed, but just a minor change, but, yeah.
I thought it was Wed- Wednesday, right? Wednesday?
Thursday.
No, it's, I'm sorry, Thursday mornings at 7:00 AM, first Thursday in the morning, sorry.
Okay.
We'll make that one.
Yeah, well, we can make the change.
We can make that change, right. Um, Chris, did you have anything?
No objection, move to approve.
All right, so you're making a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Uh, seconded by Trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barowski?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Canucci?
Aye.
And Trustee Micho?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. All right, so, uh, moving right along, this is discussion and consideration approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, uh, between the Village of Long Grove and the Illinois Department of Transportation for the maintenance, uh, and apportionment of energy costs for traffic control devices located in or near the Village of Long Grove. So, this was presented to me like five weeks ago for signature, and I looked at it, I said, I'm, I'm not sure I'm supposed to sign this, and then I, um, started asking questions, do we have such an agreement today? Jeff, I think you did the research, and this is actually probably even a little more favorable to what we have today, right?
So, uh, the village has an agreement, um, in place that's expiring, because the letter and line, which is on the board agenda. What I did is I went back and I was trying to figure out, you know, does this match the original agreements of the different cost foot, um, because not uncommon for a traffic signal to be a shared cost for the maintenance and the energy. So, this thing has a, um, exhibit A in it, divides the cost, I just wanted to make sure that those are appropriated and they're the same as what was originally agreed to. I'd asked, gave me a letter from 1992, actually an agreement from 1992 between the village and the state that, uh, had, uh, a number of these symbols in there, and yes, there's two of them that over the years, uh, have been modified, um, one of them is, is EDC and Gilburn-Hope with. The agreement for you tonight, uh, the maintenance responsibility is 100% the responsibility to the state, but that traffic signal was initially put in pre-1992, the cost foot was 75% responsibility to the state, 25% to the village, so somewhere along the line, uh, that was renegotiated, so, uh, that's to the village's benefit. Um, EDC and Robert Parker Coffin Road, uh, works the same way, so. So the state, uh, gave me the backup documents, patiently to confirm these numbers, so everything looks in order.
Yeah, I think the thing is if we don't do this, we pay, we pay for these costs today, right? So we won't get reimbursed.
Correct.
So.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Uh, Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Canucci?
Aye.
And Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, now we're moving right along into the village president and trustee reports, I'll just start with one thing. I was presented with a special event application, um, today, uh, and it's from, uh, Landmark Exteriors, they're get, they want to do an open house, um, they're looking to get stuff ordered, um, it looks like the event date is, uh, yeah, September 18th. Um, I still believe I have executive powers to approve this, it's not on the agenda, so we can't approve it, but I can approve it with your support and sign off on it and let them proceed. Any objections?
None.
Um, Chris, you, oh, you don't have the benefit of looking at it, do you? Nor does Jenny.
I, I don't have any objections, Bill, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, okay, and I'll, I'll wait a second for Bobby, I'll pause.
There's, there, I, I don't see the fence.
Oh, um, we've got, they have a, uh, Taylor Rethel, um...
Where, where are they going to be?
In their apartment, that space, right, that's correct. My understanding from the...
Between them and the dance?
Is that the, is that the dance studio?
Yeah, yeah.
And the, oh, they've got?
Yeah.
Well, can we get more, so, can we get more information where the tents are going to be and then just, um...
We can ask for a diagram, sure.
Diagram, and then we can send it out to the board, and if there's any objections, we'll let them know.
Other, other than, yeah, I'm fine.
So, we'll just send it out to the board and make sure they're okay with it. Okay, yeah, and I still have the authority to approve since the executive orders still in place.
Did anyone here go to Camp K9 openly?
We did, I did, yeah.
I did.
It was nice, yeah.
Yeah, I wish them the best of luck.
Yeah.
It's a fabulous place, as a matter of fact, on, on Nextdoor, a couple of times people are asking, and, and so, you know, where's, where's a good place to board my dog, and I think, I tell them, go there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I hope he just makes it because he'll be in Dallas.
Yep.
You know, he, he researched it at Business Plan, you know. But it's a beautiful building.
Yep.
I mean, stop, yeah, I just was up there. Yeah, you, you're a dog lover, you know they're going to take good care of them, and, and their, one of their groomers is, is somebody I know, too, and, and she's pleased with it.
Yeah, the, the one thing you also wanted to do, and you didn't finish it, was this balcony area, little, um, like you want to put a little coffee shop up there or whatever, so you can, you know, wait up there and watch your dogs down there, you know, little mezzanine type level kind of thing.
That's where you're going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess, yeah, drink coffee and watch your dog, I don't know, whatever.
Get a coffee.
So, anyways, it was, no, it was great tour, you know, he took on, it was a guided tour, the whole thing, it was, yeah, it was nice.
It was, it was so different than any, any tunnel you've ever been in.
Yep.
But, and it's, all, all of the containment is glass, so, so they can see everything that's gone on.
Wow.
Apparently those, if you want to call them cages, whatever they are, hotel rooms, um, yeah, I mean, they're very expensive, so it's like the best, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so, and, you know, and you have different, um, you know, you can get the, the full, um, suite, or you can, you know, just get the single bed and a cubby hole, right? So, the whole thing.
They can double up.
Or they can double up.
Yeah, they can double up, too, in the bigger, in the bigger suites, yeah, they can double up, yeah.
What if, you know, PCC, Mr.?
I, I'm not going there.
(laughing).
All right, that's the end of my report, um, but let's, uh, let's go around the room, make sure that no one else has reports, right?
Oh, wait, can I ask you about the sheriff's report?
Yeah, you know, that's, um, Chris, did you, um, have any comments on the sheriff's report, or Denise did? I have that.
Can somebody tell me why we had 20 financial crimes in February? What is it, bad checks?
Oh, no, so I can tell you, I had, I, I was, uh, hit up for unemployment fraud, so I'm probably, I'm probably one of those, so I mean, I looked at that and I'm like, that's what's going on, and the credit card fraud, I'm not even reporting, but the unemployment, I mean...
Yeah, that's huge.
Huge, we all got hit up.
I think I got seven, seven of them.
Um, I have a stack of letters, it's, the folder's so big, of, I mean, apparently I've been employed many, many times. Yeah.
I was employed by a construction company.
You were, okay.
Yeah, briefly.
But I believe that's what, that'd be my guess, because I, I actually called the sheriff and they were really nice, took the, they're getting, they were getting a ton of calls.
Oh, yeah, and they didn't bother, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, numbers, false alarms.
Well, I didn't want to get accused of anything, right? So, because they also sent the credit card, which, um, I didn't, I actually saved it, they were like supposed to try, they go, no, I want the evidence, I saved it, but don't turn it on, because as soon as you turn it on, they can extract the funds. It's, I, I sw- I think it's an inside job, that whole thing was an inside job.
I've been getting the, the texts from, uh, Secretary of State.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and the first time I thought, oh, I can't be, can I be? And, and then I, and then I, it dawned on me, yeah, this is, this is not good.
So, you know, the, the one that, the text message I just, actually the voicemail message I just recently got, it's apparently, um, I'm a young man and I have a student loan that needs to be paid off, and if I don't act now, it won't get paid off, so.
That's sad. Wow.
And that was about 40 years ago, right? So, I, I, you know, never mind.
(laughing).
All right, so Chris, did you have any comments? No?
N- no, no, nothing to report.
Yeah, I mean, when I was looking at it, I mean, the thing was when you take out the, the financial crimes, the fire responses, the alarm banks, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have high crime, right?
No, but AD8 traffic stopped this date.
Yeah, right.
Over seven months.
Well, and the ambulance one only, that was interesting, too, did the sheriff, um, you know, make ambulance calls, too, right? So, that was interesting, there's a lot of those, too, so.
That's, that's a nursing home, I think.
You think that's what that is?
No, if they come to, if, if you have an ambulance at your house, the sheriff comes to.
Right. There's quite a few of those, so.
They got the nursing home?
Oh, I don't know about going to, because there are, there are, I didn't see, there are boys, three of them. Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's go around the horn, so, um, uh, Rita, do you have anything?
What, uh, the sheriff's report?
No, just anything to, to report out, right?
No, Jeff's going to take the lead.
Okay, Jeff's going to take the lead, okay. Um, Bobby?
I, I just, uh, we don't have it in paper, but I sent you the save the date for next Wednesday at 5:30.
Okay, excellent, yeah, I'll be there, so, absolutely.
Could you refresh my memory? I'll probably put it...
Open house for this young man over here.
And, and this, this young lady, so, for both of them. When did you send it?
That's right, that was called, that's right, yeah, we did it for both, yeah.
Do you need it? Yeah. Wednesday?
Wednesday, 5:30.
August?
August 4th.
Thank you.
5:30, open nurse.
Thank you.
Cash bar.
(laughing).
So, worth your money.
Do you need food?
Yes, set it up.
Do you need food?
Yeah.
So Ken, I'm not going to ask you for a trustee report, we'll work through that shortly, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Or I could say, why don't you have a trustee report? But anyways, no, just kidding.
I'll send you out today.
All right.
Maybe next time.
All right, um, Chris, do you have a trustee report?
No, no, no.
Jenny, do you have one?
Can I ask Chris a question about a recycle item?
You could try.
Certainly.
I know the answer, Lake Zurich recycles styrofoam, and they say to take it to the, um, uh, veterans, the American Legion on Main Street in Lake Zurich, and the truck is there, but it's never opened. Do you know anything about that?
I didn't know re- styrofoam was recyclable, I'll, I'll ask.
Lake Zurich, okay, never mind, thank you.
Jenny, do you have a report?
Um, I, well, we haven't had an EDC meeting, because we're switching to once a month, um, but I, I wanted to follow up with something we talked about, um, and where we're, we were at with adding LinkedIn to our social media. I know we've kind of walked around it, but we've never really made a decision moving forward, um, so I kind of wanted to see where, test the waters on if we were a go or a pass on that.
Um, would, I, I, I talked with Melanie, and she, she's fine with adding it, I, I, the, the amount that it was cost, I think was minimal, um, if, if we want to add, add that.
What's the benefit?
Oh, for the EDC, for businesses, that's like LinkedIn is...
So, I know, I get it, I'm just wondering what we're going to do with it.
Well, there's, there's the question, too, is who's going to monitor, would, would we want Melanie to be monitoring it? I, I don't know.
Well, but what, what are we going to put on the site? Like, I, I understand what putting on Nextdoor, you know, it, the newsletter appears and all that, and nobody said anything bad, so I guess people are seeing it, reading it, whatever, whatever, but I, I, I'm not against it, I'm not for it, I'm just curious, what, what are we, what are we going to put on it, and what do we?
How, how about if I talk with Melanie again and get her approach to how she would handle it?
Yeah, I guess if other towns do it, and do they advertise jobs, do they, what? Jenny, what was, I probably missed that meeting, I missed a couple of them, what, what, what do you see do with this?
Uh, a lot of it is actually, um, taking pieces, um, of the newsletter that are business-related, that are highlighting businesses, or, you know, just things that we have in the newsletter or in the, the email blasts, and parsing them out kind of once a week, just to generate interest in downtown Long Grove, so it's, or not downtown Long Grove, but Long Grove in general, Long Grove businesses, and it's mostly sent out to business, businesses, so, um, you're, you're trying to tap into people that are maybe looking for a new, um, you know, arena to open a, a, a business or expand a business, um, you know, maybe blasting out occasional statistics on, you know, what, what are our traffic counts, you know, it's interesting things that might start conversations for, for local businesses or businesses from afar that are looking to relocate.
Would, 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 would the EDC be generating this?
Um, I think that some may be generated by the EDC. Mike Elliott seems to be a marketing expert, so he had some good ideas, but, um, a lot of it is just, um, like I said, kind of regurgitating some of the things that are already out there, but just veering them towards, uh, the business sector rather than neighborhoods and, um, the community.
Could we delictus businesses, is that appropriate?
Well, you, there's going to be the content management side of it, and, and not so much content creation as the trustee has described, it's going to be taking it and making sure it gets properly distributed to who it has to get distributed to. Uh, the interesting thing would be the analytics, what, what's the data say about other communities where this is at, and what kind of hits do they get from, uh, businesses? I think the idea to send out the bait, for lack of a better, better description, to reel in some businesses is something that, you know, merits, merits look, um, I, I know that, I, I've got a meeting with, uh, Jenny has asked me to come to the EDC meeting on, uh, I should be pointing up there, Jenny has asked me to come to the EDC meeting on August 5th to kind of bounce some things around, but I think critical, what, the, the worst thing that can happen with any form of social media, whether it's Facebook page, LinkedIn, Twitter, is, once it goes dormant, nobody, nobody responds to anything, so.
Right.
Priority would have to be to make sure that, that, that content is going to be kept up, even, even if it's made content and redistributed, but the other thing is, um, where is this successful in other communities from as an economic development tool, and what's the data say, and how, what tools did they use to get their numbers where they wanted to? I think before just, uh, beginning LinkedIn, you know, that may be worth, you know, looking at and, and, and at least laying that out. Personally, I would say that anytime you can use mass communication through social media and you use it effectively, it, it's a win, but it's got to be managed and the data's got to be there to support it. That's just my two cents.
You know, and, and the mailing list needs to be paid for. Um, you know, we do marketing campaigns, I don't know much about it, but when we do marketing campaigns on LinkedIn and we target specific customers or customer groups, we actually have to pay for those databases, so when you say blast out, um, I, I don't know what that means, is it post to your, to your, to your page? That's cool, your followers will see it, but how do you get the followers and how do you put it in people's mailboxes that you want to specifically see? Um, you know, I think of a, I don't know, I'll pick a company like Coke, if you wanted to, you know, send a blast to everybody who works at Coca-Cola or possibly could, you know, invest in Long Grove, you have to identify who that group is and you have to pay for that mailing list. And to me, that's part of what we need to do in preparation of it, it's not just posting to another website or another, another page, you know, if you're going to use LinkedIn, who are your targets? What are those mailing lists going to cost you? Because you actually have to bid those case by case, it's not like LinkedIn has a set price, you bid it out. If you want to know whoever engineers it works for Coke, you have to bid against other companies who want that same data. Um, so I, I, I don't know, I, I mean, it's okay to say post it and put it out there, but, but what are you going to use LinkedIn beyond that? And what are your targets, and what are the costs associated with that? And I think you could estimate some of those early enough, uh, to know if it makes sense. But, but who are you going to target as your mailing list? Not just people who follow us, because there's a lot already doing that.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we have a, a list of local businesses that we've generated, and so that would be the first. And then, um, I, Mike, as Mike Elliott has described it, you know, it would be great if the trustees would like and comment to generate some interest and expand, so, I mean, I don't, I'm not a social media expert.
Well, no, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that, that whoever the administrator is could put in LinkedIn requests for all the businesses in the village, and you could start right there, right, and get a nucleus of, uh, you know, of, of folks in the network, and expand from there. I'm thinking it would work that way, that's what we got to make sure it works out, yeah.
Well, well, I would also ask them, who's going to do all this?
Well, that's what we're paying Melanie for, right?
Well.
Well, not for buying the mailing lists.
I would-
Well, if we were going to do a mailing list, right, yeah, yeah.
With her, because, you know, the others are just, um, kind of creating the, the post and posting it, that's-
You still have that same functionality with LinkedIn, it's the same thing.
Yeah, except that LinkedIn is, it is a different animal. It's called social media, but it's a different animal, because it's more, it's more business-oriented.
I know.
Jobs, jobs, you know, yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, so we, we use it, right, yeah.
So, the smart thing is, exactly what Greg says, I think, find out who has used it, and what they've got, what they were looking for, and what they've got. I think it's a great idea if, if, not necessarily for us to be advertising our current businesses, but to be finding, putting feelers out to people that are thinking of opening businesses, to pull them in. And they've got, they've got nice footage, video footage that could be posted. Somebody, somebody in marketing, which I'm, I'm not, would know much better what works.
Well, Mike, yeah.
Mike Elliott might have some, you know, fabulous ideas, because that is his, his cup of tea, and see how that, what he's saying.
Maybe you can talk to him when you go to the, you know, yeah.
And what do they want, what, what do they want to accomplish with this?
Yep, yep, new strategy.
Um, it, it, that, that, to me, is the big question. What is, I know what, you know, we generally want is, we want to build the stores.
And build them.
Or build some, um, but, but beyond that, they feel more specific in, in what they want to do, and how they're, where do you want to go, and how you want to get there.
Right, right, what does success look like?
Well, yeah.
It's a good, right?
Trustee, would you have a problem if I reached out to Mr. Elliott?
No, are you asking me? No, I think that's a great idea, I think he is definitely the, the driving force. Um, he has a lot of experience with this, and I think he has offered his time to help collaborate with Melanie, or, um, whoever, you know, the, the staff, um, to, to help curate the LinkedIn, um, feed. Uh, we just, I think, we just, mostly, I'm trying to find out if there's an interest, and if we're wasting our time moving forward. But it seems like maybe there's just more conversation, um, but yeah, I would highly encourage you to talk to Mike Elliott.
If I, if I can get an idea of what the scope is, then I can bring it back, and we can get a feel from the communications team, and then see how that works together.
Perfect.
And this reminds me of something, um, that, that we put in the last newsletter. Um, and Anne's behalf was a questionnaire on the, the, um-
Concert.
Okay, or-
Yeah, I have it right here, yep.
And, and, and we got twenty-two responses, um.
I never received a question at my house. No, it was in the newsletter. Right, I know, I thought we were going to, I thought we were using Polk's system, but-
We did.
Yeah, they use Polk's, yeah.
Yeah.
It was twenty-
But it was, it was in the newsletter, we, 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 we went in a controlled situation, just to see what would happen. And, and, and so, that was kind of the result, and so we'll move, we'll grow from there.
I, I would wear, I read it, but I was waiting for-
Um, you can, but I don't know what happened to my-
We had to click. We had to click on it. It just popped right back up.
Okay.
I didn't pick up on that.
Oh, it was the word that said click here.
But, but, you know, sometimes everything, well, okay, good point.
No internet.
I use my house button.
No internet.
We can still hear you, Bill, we just don't have your beautiful face.
That's the nice thing with the, oh, yeah.
Well, let's see, I'm going to try to connect again.
Trustee O'Connor, Swalco does not collect styrofoam, because it's mostly air, and it costs three hundred and more percent than any other commodity to recycle. The only place that Swalco accepts recycling is at the City of Highland Park Recycle Center.
Well, Lake Zurich might be using someone else, I think their holler is, um, very-
I know Apt.
Go ahead.
Apt, I was going to say Apt, um, you can drop off styrofoam, and not food, used in food, but anything used in packaging for electronics, Apt will take it, and they're, they'll take it any day they're open.
Thanks, that, so going back to the Polk's, they had twenty-two responses so far, and twenty out of twenty-two are favorable, only one comment so far, so that's what she said to us, so.
But I have to admit, I agree with that point.
Do we have a head count? I'm sorry, Bill, do we have a head count for that event, roughly?
Two, three hundred people.
No, more than that, there had to be eight or nine hundred people there, I would think.
Really?
There was a lot of people.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot, maybe I'm high, but at least five, six hundred, there was a lot of people there.
Do we, do we know?
Maybe you're high, is that what you said?
Now, don't take that, now, now, don't take that literally, I'm high on the number count, okay?
Okay, I see, I understand.
Forget it, I'm just going to leave it alone, Chris.
Thanks, thank you, Bill, appreciate it.
Other participants contributed?
Do we know if other?
How much do others contribute?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but they, yeah.
I asked that question, and it was-
Anne knows, yeah.
No, Anne doesn't know.
She doesn't know.
It, we don't know that, we don't know, but it was, um, to, they had, they had to pay a certain amount to be sponsors. And I don't know, I don't know what, what it was.
Well, because in, in the brochure, it just, we weren't even mentioned.
I, and I mentioned that because I, and they, that was like a separate agreement with that group, apparently.
Uh, that, that kind of, I think we needed a little more-
Well, here's another little speck toy, um, just recently, the Highland Park Pops, seventeen-piece band appeared in Graves Lake, and brought in, I don't know how many hundreds of people. I sent them an email and said, what, what would be your fee for July fourth, Village of Long Grove? Three hundred dollars. And I said, how many people in your, how many people in your orchestra? Seventeen. And, and he said, we've played at Long Grove for the festivals in the past, which, about which I had no idea, but three hundred for seventeen-piece orchestra, ten, ten grand for, you know. So, there are other possibilities out there, but it's, it would be a nice thing to start and continue, three hundred bucks, you can't beat that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I just have always wondered what their, their contribution was.
It was over, over and above. It was a very profitable day for-
No, 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 I'm talking about ours.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Any other trustee reports? I'm going to keep this moving, um, approval of the meeting minutes, um, from the July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting? Do you, do you have a question? Come?
Well, it's probably going to come up under Jess's report, so, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so you want to, you, you'll have something you want to, comment you want to make, a-
I think Jeff will-
Okay, we'll do, we'll, we'll let you do that under Jess's report. So, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes, any changes, any? Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor?
Second.
Second by trustee Michio, roll call.
Uh, trustee Michio?
Aye.
Trustee Baroski?
Aye.
Trustee Canucci?
Epstein, I wasn't there.
Trustee O'Reilly, Epstein, and trustee O'Connor. Aye.
All right, that, that carries, right, there's, uh, yeah, that carries. Yep, okay, motion carried, all right, um, the trustee, the treasurer's report, um, we're going to pass on it, right, or?
The treas, the treasurer's report, we put into the, um, Google Drive for people to take a look at it, so it's, uh, two months old. Um, we're working, myself and Denise and trustee Chris Meyer are working to get a reasonable schedule, so we'd get this stuff on a timely basis, that and the warrants on a monthly basis. So, we're hoping to have that all cleaned up for the next board meeting.
I like the format, I love it.
There's a lot of data there, and what, what's difficult with having so much data is making sure the data that you need to see is front and center. And, uh, that's what I want to make sure happens, however we can reforact that as well.
I hope that someday we actually have a workshop, and at that workshop, I hope we'll go through the treasurer's report. Um, I, I could spend some time with it, but got lost in some places, and tie that in with the sheriff's report, and the prosecutor, and, and how that, they don't necessarily intermingle, but, but those three items that I really wish we could dig into, um, someday. Can we-
But before we-
Can we save work?
Well, before we do that, though, no, it's, so here's what I've been asking, talking to Greg about, so we've got, we're fully seated now again, right? We, we need to have a strategy, strategic planning workshop. And, and we, I think that's like the first thing, just to make sure we're all aligned, that you're, no?
I don't think so, I, I mean, I've, I've been asked about this prosecutor for years, 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 and, and I never get a straight answer, and, and, um, and the sheriff's report too.
The, it, it's, I, it's, I've been having an opportunity now to start digging in after three weeks, to start looking at some of the reports. Chris, trustee has brought up, uh, uh, the issue of the Lake County Sheriff's Report, making them more specific to, to, uh, to certain responses to calls and numbers and data, which is very similar to what I had my police department do at my last location. So, putting that together will be fine. I, I think I feel comfortable that if the board wanted to do a committee of the whole, that would be an hour or so before the, a village board meeting or separate, that I could do a presentation on each one of those reports, um, rather than a full-blown workshop, and be able to ask the questions, give you the documents, and then come back and say, what, what else can I find for you? Or, um, again, I'm still trying to feel myself, feel, feel myself around with this stuff, you know, trying to feel around this, so.
Well, that's why, I'm, I'm not, I'm not pushing the issue, because, um, I, I want, you know, I want you and Ken to, to feel like your feet are on the ground. Um, but nonetheless, um, you know, we've been talking about, talking about this, this sheriff's report and the prosecutor, and, and the, when the prosecutor came and spoke to us, he caused more questions in my mind than he solved. And, um, and, and so if you tie all of those three together, there is, um, a, a certain, um, link to them. Because if the prosecutor is, is, is going to court on every single traffic stop in Long Grove, where's your money? I don't know.
I have to look at our sheriff's agreement to see what the terms are for, um, ordinance violations, and if they're writing them as, what, what type of tickets they're writing, um, to determine, uh, court fines, and what we're getting along those lines.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm real confused, because one party told me what's this, and one party told me that.
I'll dig into it.
Okay, so, I, I, I would like to see us even have a dinner meeting, um, and, and, and have dinner, and, and spend two hours, three hours, just questioning all of this stuff. Rita and I could probably do four hours of questions on, on some of this, yeah, and, and, and I think we need to, I think we need to do that.
From an operational standpoint, I can hit that and, and get something going with that. From, from the others, so I absolutely, so you can have some answers, because quite honestly, as I go through things now, I'm trying to find the answers as well, so it's, this is what I found, this is what I can share, this would be a recommendation on how we would proceed. To, to President Jacob's point about the, about the strategy meeting, I've been asking for that too. I think it's important for me, uh, as a new manager, rather than six or eight months down the line, to find out what direction this board wants, uh, for, for the village. And, you know, from an economic development standpoint, from a, a land use standpoint, from property, uh, your property maintenance standpoint, all, all those things that, uh, you know, make Long Grove what Long Grove is. The historic business district, but not forgetting we have business at the north end of town at sixteen eighty-three, and that we have business over at Sunset Grove, and how do we join that together to be a comprehensive strategic, uh, economic development strategy? Um, but, you know, I, I've always been one, I remember arriving at an employer who, who didn't have a mission statement, and the first thing that needed to be created in order for the organization to succeed was, know what the mission is, and how do we get there? It's the roadmap. For me, as the manager, to, um, move the village in the direction that the collective body wants it moved into, you know, wants it moved to, the only way I can feel, uh, that, that, that would happen effectively is if I had clear direction through a strategic meeting, that all the, all the trustees and the, and the president concurred on, okay, this is what we're going to do, and here's our priorities over this many, this period of time. I think it's important for me to be held to account for deliverables that this body hired the manager for. And then I, quite honestly, hold staff accountable for their end in supporting those deliverables, but I can't deliver if I don't know what to deliver.
Well, and it would, it would certainly help me a great deal, and I'll speak just for myself, to, to understand where are we going? What is, what are the goals? And does this, whatever this is, does that, does that forward us with our goals? Or is it nice to have an oxygen, and let's put it aside? I, I would love to be able to answer the question, what, what are Long Grove's top three goals?
And I've had the fortune, the fortune of working over the last three weeks closely with trustee O'Reilly on some issues, as well as trustee Kritzmeyer on some issues, and, and, and just because there were issues I was looking at, or we were having discussions about, but it's clear the passion of the board, uh, for this village, otherwise you wouldn't have run for office, I mean, there's no, no way of saying, any, saying it any other way. I just want to be able to, uh, deliver on what you want to see happen to this village. And the strategic, a strategic, uh, meeting with a vision meeting, a stra, a strategy meeting, in my opinion, is the right way to go.
Don't, don't misunderstand my suggestion, I, I, I certainly support doing that. I just don't want these other issues to come off the table. But I guess, I think that's, yes.
And I'll let Chris or Jenny speak too, because I think we're, the reason I say that is that we've, you know, some of us, uh, I guess I'm, am I the only one, six years now?
I've been doing this for seventeen.
No, I meant, on the-
Last year, please.
No, on the village board.
Yeah.
So, what I'm saying is that, you know, we've, we've accomplished a lot in that period of time, but now, what are we doing the next four years, you know? And are we all aligned? And that's what I'm saying, right, I, you know, that, that's all it was.
And the next ten years.
And the next ten years, right, yeah. So, anyways, I don't know, Chris or Jenny or?
Nothing to add, Bill.
Neither from me.
So, speaking of the new trustee, I would love to have a strategy session, because if you, because you get a grounding on where we are and where we're going.
No, as long as we have the workshop first, I got it, so.
I did, I, I, I didn't say workshop first.
No, I was, just do it.
Just get it on a calendar somewhere, I don't care if this is in October or November, just so that sometimes it's done.
Okay. All right, I was trying to be funny, but sorry.
I have one other question.
You just smile then, when you're being funny.
So, I don't know, Greg, it might be something for you. Some time back, maybe a year and a half ago, maybe two years, it was brought up that a lot of the cell companies, telecommunications taxes were to pay to Lake Zurich instead of Long Grove. Taxes paid by Long Grove residents were to be paid to Lake Zurich. Did that ever get resolved?
Pretty much.
Did it? Okay, that's good.
And, and, and it's less every year.
It's less going, less going to Lake Zurich every year?
No, it would come to-
Telecommunication tax, yeah.
Yeah, because cell phone rates are going down, and debt rates are-
Everyone's cut the cord too, we were getting, uh, a lot of it with landlines, getting less and less.
Oh, it was landline, telecommunications tax, not cell phone.
It was all of it, but we're, we're getting less and less landlines, so.
Freedom, I would ask, because I actually tried to get my bill changed from Lake Zurich to Long Grove, and after about four or five phone calls, and nobody knowing what I was talking about, I managed to get one of my T-Mobiles changed over, and the other one I never could. Meanwhile, I switched from Long Grove to T, I'm sorry, from Verizon to T-Mobile, but I don't know how many taxes to Lake Zurich.
Well, we, we certainly pushed the issue a lot about, you know, checking, checking all of your cell phones and, and landlines, and so forth, and, and, you know, you can just go so far with people.
All right, no, thank you, so, um, I guess end of trustee reports will, um, or treasurer, that was the treasurer's report, but it turned into more trustee reports, um, village engineer report.
Okay, all right, so, the engineer's report is in her packet, uh, I will highlight a few things, and then some commentary and updates. Uh, first thing, North Crook Road, uh, I was able to drive by there today, and I was treated to the smell of nice fresh asphalt. So, they've got half of that paid, they'll, uh, pay the other half tomorrow, and they will take down the detour on Thursday morning, the twenty-ninth. So, um, I want to make sure that, uh, that, that I'm clear on that. The detour comes down, so you can drive through there, contractor still does have two to three weeks of work. Uh, when they're out there, they'll leave flaggers, but you will be able to get through there.
You either have flaggers there, collectors, I mean, it doesn't matter. You either have flaggers there, collectors on the east or it doesn't matter.
Uh, you'll be able to get through North Coker Road a little faster than Route eighty eight, so.
For sure, for sure. What a nightmare, what a nightmare.
Yeah, I got a complaint letter over, uh, yesterday too, so I haven't responded yet.
Um, okay, so the, uh, the bridge needs to be repaired. I should be getting quotes by the end of the week to do those repairs. So, uh, once I get those, send them over to, uh, Greg and I'll imagine he'll be able to just approve those as an insurance claim. So, um, once I get those, I'll, um, get that work done, so, so I'll keep the board apprised of that. Uh, skipping down to, uh, number six, the Temple parking lot. Greg, uh, jump in if you'd like to. We had some discussions earlier this week, uh, between myself, Greg, and then Greg had some discussions with President Bill about the timing of that. And we want to, um, thread the needle, if I can use that expression, to try to get this work done without impacting the Village Fest. The most important one is the Apple Fest, which is the end of September. So, um, Greg is going to contact the local businesses, correct, I went wrong, um, about starting the project after Apple Fest. And having that done before Halloween. I think that's advantageous for, for the village. Contractor hasn't, do you want me to stop?
No, my Zoom went down again, but it's, we're still on the speaker, so keep going.
The after Apple Fest, we, you hope to get it done during the month of October.
Correct.
Can I just, so the one thing that I don't think has been fully explained to everyone, that I know, um, when I landed, I was talking to Greg, is the, this is, um, the way the project's going to be done, right? And the number of days in between steps. So, I mean, because it all is going to have to be pulverized and they're going to do it all at once, right?
Yeah, so there'll be one mobilization to come in there, take all the asphalt off. They'll come in with one time to shape the stone and make it ready for pavement. And then in one mobilization, is what they call it, they'll do all of the paving. They'll pave the asphalt binder and then, yeah.
Are they going to, um, do the reclamation or whatever, are they going to grind it up and put it back down?
Uh, no, this, uh, project is a five inch, uh, pavement removal.
So they're going to take it out? Okay.
So they'll take out all the pavement, uh, they'll do what's called a crew roll on the base. They'll put a loaded truck on it, make sure it's all suitable for, uh, paving on top of it. So that way, you know, we reach that twenty years, that was in that memo, seems like a long time ago that I wrote that. And then we'll be able to pave on top of it. The contractor is planning to do this in one, you know, one, uh, one project. Parking lots of this size and configuration to try to, you know, piecemeal it in one section at a time. You're going to end, end up with a project that, that's not going to last as long. Because you're doing one section and trying to tiptoe around the next section, try not to step on yourself. So, uh, that's why when Greg and I met yesterday and the Apple Fest was discussed, it says, you know, I, based on my conversations with the contractor and, you know, the village has decided to minimize disruption, you know, let's, uh, see if constructing this in October, uh, works for the businesses.
But, but, so, but I mean, it's just, I know you may not have it, but I mean, it's like, is it a week?
So I don't have to.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get at.
How you contact the contractor and say, hey, you know, what's your order of operations? Because the other thing that drives me nuts as well as everybody else is when they do one operation and then it looks like that for a week.
Yeah.
And then they do the next one. And then it looks like that for another week.
Right, yeah, so, so I mean, because you think about by the chatterbox on either side, you know, and, and they're busy on the weekends, the brewery and stuff like that, so you're, you're, you're going to want to make sure that, you know, on a Saturday or on a Friday, whatever, that, that people, customers can get there, right? Because it'll be a loss of business for them. So I just want to, like, get more granular on what that all is, right? You know?
Well, I, I sure, I, I hate to think about winter. But, but weather, weather just, um, really concerns me. That you get, that you get into October and, and, you know, I've always heard that, oh, the, the plants are closing. And, and, and to let it go until next year would be disastrous.
Right. We talked about October, did being a concern from a construction standpoint, did?
What if they get busy and they can't do it, right? So then we, you know, we get, and we get pushed back. That happened here, right? We had that issue here with RPC, didn't we? Um, it got really late.
Yeah, it certainly did, yeah, it's one of those things. Day after day.
The question was, is, is it, if they leave the gravel there for a while, is it going to be in a condition where people can use it, right? So you're, you know, it could be there for a few weeks, is that really an inconvenience?
So, um, the gravel will be suitable to park on. But, you know, probably is not advisable, I don't think, from the village standpoint. I, from my standpoint, I think the quicker they can start the project and get to the end of the project is, is the win.
When's the contractor getting back to you?
So, um, I let my reach out to him today and he's back. He's been battling to the list, so, uh, I'll contact him again tomorrow to continue that conversation.
Mr. Geske.
Mr. Geske, yep.
Vintage Day is not something that I think uses asphalt.
Okay.
And, and so that's the only fest between now and, and, and.
September.
Yeah, and Vintage Day is in August.
Yeah, yeah, but they don't use sample. They're, they're, they use the sidewalk. And it's very small this year.
The question on this was, we were talking about targeting an August tenth date, which, which would have been three days after Vintage Day. Not that that was a consideration, but, but we looked at August tenth and the, the question that remained out there was, if there's a hiccup, are we going to be able to guarantee that contractor is going to be done by the Apple Fest? If something should happen, whether it's weather related, whether it's some kind of hiccup. So, or was the option better not to run the risk of compromising, uh, Apple Fest and going after Apple Fest to the end of October? That was kind of the quagmire we were, we were with.
And then you're at the mercy of the weather and ultimately the asphalt plant shutdown.
Yes, for the, for the weather, you know, typically the asphalt plants show, close the Friday before Thanksgiving. Uh, that's historically what they do. But, um, any and every project, paving wise that I've done in November, um, I don't get a lot of sleep those, those months because.
We have, we have one, we have one, remember?
Exactly, exactly. Not, not a, a good situation. So, um, I know that a few years ago, it was actually the Robert Parker Coffin project, you know, let's know that, that.
Right.
Yeah. Um, but you know, I think that's the key is, and Bobby needs to be a part of this too, is the liaison, is get the downtown involved in those, that decision a little bit, that there's risk that the festival, you know, parking lot could be torn up. Is that an issue? Is that a concern, right? You still might be able to park on it and just be as honest as possible, let them help decide, right?
I think that's a great idea, yes. That kind of covers up a little bit.
Yeah.
But isn't the purpose, not the purpose, but when you, when you're laying asphalt and there's gravel, isn't that supposed to be compacted?
Oh, true.
Before you lift the asphalt or people are driving on it and throwing it all over the place, how is that?
So, um, typically, you know, they do throw it around, but not to the extent where it compromises the structural integrity of it. I have had cases where it does and the good news is the, the same equipment that, um, compacts the stone is the same equipment that they use to compact the asphalt. So it's there. So, um, worse comes to worse, you know, but the contractor will have to, uh, run his, uh, compactor over again. Which, you know, he'll probably tell me, come on Jeff, and I'll be like, Danny, gotta do it, and he'll do it.
When is that?
I think it's September twenty fifth.
September twenty fourth through twenty sixth.
But we can't get it done after Vintage Day from before then?
So we had a tentative start date in August tenth.
Right.
That was the other thing that I'm waiting for Geske to confirm, you know, are you going to hit that date? And until I hear that, uh, you know, I don't put a lot of stock into that.
With the drought, they can't be that far behind on stuff.
I don't think they're that far behind. It's probably a matter of, and I know Geske just working with them over the years, they're doing some schoolwork as well. So, and I know those types of projects are doing, I'm not making excuses for them, I'm just, um.
A little reality.
Exactly.
They're trying to get those done before school starts.
Correct, correct.
That, regardless of when we do it, when they do it, that, that meeting of certainly the property owners right there, but, but others too, should, should know, you know, when you're talking for hours and, and, and they need to know what this is going to mean. So there is very easy to call a quick meeting with them.
And they're, they're a pretty creative group. You know, I mean, they operated all last summer with, with it closed down. So maybe there's a workaround that works for them, works for getting it done.
But knowing is better than not knowing.
Yeah, make them part of the solution, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, yes, yeah.
Just going to understand, are we talking about potentially not even starting until after Apple Fest?
Correct.
Yeah, that seems risky.
So it's, it's that or as Greg mentioned, you know, is the risk of not having it completely done in a, you know, before Apple Fest. You know, parking on gravel.
We need to do it, but I'm thinking it's better to have gravel in Apple Fest than have gravel the entire winter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about having gravel over the winter, even starting right after Apple Fest. So, um, obviously that's, uh, going to be a firm commitment from the contractor as well.
Well, let me know in time, I mean, and, 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 and we can set something up quickly.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, um, the, uh, the Lake Michigan Water Connection, remember this heading, I did, uh, mention that the APRA funds are being released and that Greg attended a webinar, seminar, something like that.
A lecture from DECO.
There you go, uh, yesterday, so, um, I'm making sure that, uh, working with them to make sure we've got all the information to get in line for the money and, um, make sure the paperwork's there and get them what they, they need. Um, all right, page two. The number ten is the, uh, state's, uh, project of widening at Old Hicks Road. As I reported at the last board meeting, there's a blockage in the drain tile that goes under fifty-three under the pavement. I sent that, that was finding over to IDA and, uh, still waiting for a response. I talked with Rita earlier today and I did tell her that I'm going to wait and probably contact them every week until I, I get an answer on that. Because it's under the pavement, it's clearly in their, in their property. We shall see how that one plays out.
Do they, do they owe a remuneration to the homeowner who has lost like twenty trees as a result of that? Maybe that's a big question.
I'm sorry, what's the cause of the loss of the tree? To IDA?
Their, their drainage tile, their drain tile was, was broken and.
Uh, okay, yes.
Property's been underwater for ten years. They blamed it on arborea, it's not arborea, it's, and they left, they left like eighteen to twenty oak trees.
I think we've had this issue come up before, right? Um, you know, well, we told them at the time, same answer, that they, they may have remedies against IDA, but it's not, uh, something that the village can. No, I didn't say that, I just, the village can't adjudicate that for them and the village can't do it on their behalf, so.
I understand.
Yeah, so, I, I can't offer any opinion about their chances of success in court, but they, they might have remedies there and they can certainly talk to their own attorney about it.
Yeah, I doubt it, eighteen oak trees, boy.
So, um, there was a lesson learned on, on this one and we applied it to North Coker Road. I, I don't know if, uh, we remember all the, the discussions about the drain tile that Prairie Trails brought up that went under the road and we wanted to make sure that that was in good condition, uh, before putting the pavement on there. So, um, we went out there, this one, we actually were able to see the pipe on each end of the road, because there's a concrete structure there. Nice white PVC pipe. But we wanted to go the next step, which is televising it. Good thing that we did that because, um, at about five feet of white PVC pipe was on each side of the road. You put the camera through there, it was a clay drain tile. So, uh, it's good that we run the camera through there. Also good that, uh, we replaced that with a, uh, nice brand new, uh, concrete pipe. So, um, try to protect against these things and do what we can. Farmers are creative, so I don't know how long that drain tile was there, the clay certainly, uh, quite a while, so.
But see, to me, it just reinforces, you know, we did spend public money on private property to scope under fifty-three. Low behold, what did we find? And then that led to the question of, well, we don't do these drain tile studies before these projects begin. Well, no, not really. Well, guess what? You know, now, I mean, it, it should be step number one. Whatever's being, whatever's being excavated, plan rebuilt eighty-three, you know, drain tile surveys. So we can prove what was relevant or foresee something that, I mean, who'd want to tear up Kruger two years from now because this stupid thing broke?
Yeah, yeah, no.
So it's money well spent.
Okay, uh, dropping down, number thirteen is the Robert Parker Coffin Road pathway. That's currently out to bid right now. We've got, uh, nine contractors that have, uh, picked up the plans for that, so hoping for some good bids. Uh, and we'll open those next, uh, Tuesday morning.
Hey, can I just make a comment on that too? Because, um, it wasn't, um, this past weekend, it was the weekend before, uh, my wife and I, um, actually didn't go to dinner downtown, but we came back downtown, um, to go have some wine. And, um, what we noticed was just a ton of people in downtown, but there were people walking down Robert Parker Coffin Road, towards the Sunset Foods, um, you can't see them. So that pathway is going to be so helpful. There's people walking in to the downtown from other, um, Buffalo Grove and other areas, um, and, and they're going to use that pathway. And the other thing is I got a resident that is in Buffalo Grove that wrote me saying, you need, you all, you need a pathway by Harbor Chase, um, across fifty-three. We go, we walk safely so that we can, you know, enjoy beverages here, uh, but it's dangerous. So, um, I know I mentioned something, uh, to Greg, uh, um, because he was meeting with Dane Bragg about, maybe there's a way to split the cost of putting a stop, you know, some kind of crosswalk up there. But when you do that, it's going to be, it's going to help get more pedestrian traffic into the downtown, which is good for, you know, safety reasons and business as well, right?
Are you talking going all the way around, are you?
No, just, um, if you, um, if you go, uh, what is it, uh, the, the, the name of the development? If you just go straight across.
Fairfield?
Per, cross, per.
No, no, that's a.
Fairfield.
Uh, no, not, uh, no, just as, as you go down, down by Harbor Chase by the, um, at fifty-three and Old McHenry, right? Fifty, crosses, crosses, right? The, um.
Gee, a bridge could do it.
A, yeah, but I mean, just there, I mean, people cross there into our, from Buffalo Grove, they come in to the downtown. It's very dense back there, right? A lot of houses and so forth, so that, that was the, I got an email on that, they asked, was, hey, have you ever considered that, right?
I, I, I still don't understand what you mean. You mean the lawn with Old McHenry or the.
Yeah, straight across, straight across fifty-three at, uh, Old McHenry. The path's already there, the path's already there.
I was going to say, yeah, it's very.
It's just getting a crosswalk, getting a crosswalk, yeah.
Yes.
Getting a crosswalk there. But, um, down Rob, Robert Parker Coffin Road, the one that we were talking about, I saw people walking towards the Sunset Foods and very, you know, very dangerously, you, you can't see it, it's so dark, right? And there was a group of, uh, folks walking and I'm sure they were out here enjoying our downtown and they were just heading back, right? So anyways, I didn't know.
If you go down our central road, you can get fifty, fifty, maybe seventy-five, twenty.
Yeah, so somehow figure out a way, yeah, there you go, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, and then I just wanted to tie, uh, the pathway discussion into number seventeen, which is the forestment replacement by the county. I found out today that, um, the funding has not been secured, that's still accurate for that project. And it does not look very likely, probably less than a one percent chance that, uh, that forestment project is going to happen this year. So immediately upon finding that out, I started asking the questions about coordinating the two projects. Because we don't want one project to suffer, uh, like they expressed the other, so. So, um, that was just news yesterday, sorry, I don't have, uh, answers where that's actually gonna go, but those are the discussions on that item. Um, just, just jumping back, just real quick on our, on the other drain tile that we talked about, number fifteen, as I reported, that's Lake Eleanor State, uh, the homeowners association is going to have to, um, fight the water to complete getting that, uh, drain tile televised, uh, because it's all underwater, you know, for various reasons, I'm sure, so...
It's living water.
A lot of different reasons, so, anyway, um, met up there, the contractor had a plan, uh, looking for the proposal for that, so, uh, for that, the HOA, and, uh, it's gonna be a big number, I'm quite sure, and I'm sure there's gonna be some other conversations after that, bringing, uh, Greg into the, the discussion on that one.
Like seven figures, big number?
Uh, I don't think seven, six is not out of the ballpark. So, we're somewhere close to there.
They've had a terrible HOA for so long.
So, they want, they can set up an SSA?
So, they can, they can set up an SSA to fund it, um, head to head, um, which wouldn't do it, but...
A lot of heads.
That's a lot of it, so, um, I, I think that's where I'm gonna bring Greg in, you know, start talking ideas to, to fund that and do that, because that's the next step and what's needed.
Can they get a grant from Stormwater Management?
So, uh, possibly, possibly. Um, Lake County Stormwater Management, uh, historically, they like to fund construction projects instead of feasibility or, you know, investigative projects, but it never hits that much question. So, um, I know Kurt Wolford over there, I think, once I get the number, the thought did go through my mind, uh, once I get the number, give him a call, and just kind of feel out current policy and where he stands on that. All right, so, uh, let's see, moving on here, number, number twenty, the state is looking at options to improve Route twenty-two and Route eighty-three. Um, myself, um, Manager Jackson, and Trustee O'Connor, I don't know...
Yeah, I'm gonna make it, yeah.
They're gonna be good too. We're all going to have a, a WebEx meeting with IDA on August sixth, where they're going to present their ideas to improve that. Um, just a brief review of the documents they've sent so far, their ideas are expanding turn lanes.
Okay. That's, that's good news, because we heard other thoughts, uh, a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at expanding, you know, the, the size of the left turn lanes, the right turn lane from north eighty-three going east, um, they're, uh, put a right turn lane south going west, and then the other thing that, uh, we can, uh, let them explain how they're gonna do it is a free-flow right turn lane from westbound twenty-two to northbound eighty-three. So, um, there's one of those up by where I live on the county road, it, it seems, it works, but you gotta have a, what's called an onboarding lane to make that work, so...
You kind of do that getting off of fifty-three at Lake Cook.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of the same idea, but that one gets real complicated with the lead there.
Fun not to mention the houses over there, so...
Yep, yep, the road number is right there, along the power poles and everything else.
Right.
Um, is, is the, the project on sixty-eighty-three and Diamond Lake Road, is that dead?
Uh, the overpass there?
Yes.
That is not dead, uh, it is still in the phase one, the feasibility study, uh, don't think...
Yeah, I...
It's like, it's like...
No, no, it's not, no, it's further along than twenty-two.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Oh, is it, it's on, it's on the five-year calendar?
Yes, it's on, it, you can look, it, you, we can look it up online, of course, I keep dropping, but...
Yeah, we were a few years into the five-year calendar already.
Yeah, so it's closer than twenty, Route twenty-two.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything on that one for a while yet.
Yes, yes, the, the, that, that area, there, you know, when the trains come through, it's just awful, just awful.
Well, those are, us that live in real north-long growth, in north-north parts, experience that much more than anyone else, so...
Well, not necessarily, but if, if they're really slow with it, you, you come through that, and when I, you know, I can sometimes go around, I'll go over all the way around, but, yeah, that, that, that's a bad place, but you are further north than I.
Yep, yep, I'm on the wrong side of the tracks too.
But that's, that's sure.
Yes.
And that, that comes in the, uh, NDSD studying throughout the country, because of Canadian Pacific and...
It was their fault, but anyways, I'll leave that alone.
Well, they're, they're merging, or trying to merge, and...
Well, then they're, then they're trying to increase traffic, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's more oil coming through there and everything else that's dangerous, so, yep, can't build a pipeline.
Twenty-two and eighty-three, is that potentially tied into twenty-two widening? Now, those, or they do it at the same time?
No, no.
What would be after?
Twenty-two, we've done that twenty-three.
No, it's, it's, it's closer than that too, but that's making progress too, right? But, we actually have a plan now, right?
Both, both of the, those projects are in their, uh, five-year, one-year program, so, that's all I'm saying.
Maybe I didn't ask the question properly, we were talking about twenty-two and eighty-three improvement, what's the timeframe for that?
Uh, that is, the twenty-two and eighty-three?
The intersection improvement?
They haven't, yeah, they haven't, that's separate...
They couldn't figure that out.
Oh, we don't know, no, there's money, the Senator put some money behind it, so there's money for it.
Yeah, there's, there's five million dollars allocated to Route twenty-two and eighty-three for construction.
For the intersection alone.
I thought you were talking about the intersection.
Just the intersection alone, yeah, so...
Yeah, and, um, I would, I very strongly say that they're not going to do those at the same time, because Route twenty-two, when they do that widening, it's going to be disruptive, it's gonna be everybody looking at ways to get around it, because they don't wanna take out, um, out of order, one of the biggest intersections in the area.
Okay.
But, uh, certainly that's a good point, and see what IDA says on August sixth as far as construction timing. So, all right, um, sorry, I'm a little long with this tonight, uh, the miscellaneous things, uh, the overheight detection system for the bridge, uh, we're still looking at options of giving the cost for the electric, electricity component of that. Um, you know, the village has a metered service and electric on the east side of the bridge, the west side of the bridge is the, the difficult side to get that. Um, so we're looking at option pricing, you know, different ways. One is, you know, we can talk to ComEd and get a new service, which is going to be expensive and, uh, it might give, uh, myself some gray hairs. Um, we can take the, um, electric from the west side of the bridge, or the east side of the bridge, excuse me, to the west side, which is going to be expensive, because you gotta creek to deal with. Um, I meant with utility dynamics earlier this week, and we found that the church has an electric service, and it looks like it's just for their apartment lot lights, so there might be an opportunity that they would partner with the village to, um, do the electricity over there. Um, I had a great idea, talked to Jesse, um, I don't know if you knew that he was an elder, but church...
Oh, I knew that, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that either, so, um, I, I talked to him, uh, today, and, uh, he let me know that, and this is, you know, sounds like a great idea, that the church would like you to work with the village, you know, can you just send me and put it in an email, what you're asking for to start the discussion, so that's where we're at on that, so, um, that, uh, will be the most efficient and cheapest option, so we'll see how that, uh, works out here in the next, uh, few days. Uh, the light pole in front of the auto path, um, we've been waiting for, waiting for parts all week. So, uh, I did, uh, news with, uh, Greg yesterday, that, uh, each time he gets this report, that number will go down, so...
But you got the money already for it, right?
We've got, uh, for the equipment itself, and now we're trying to get some soft costs associated with it.
But, but you got like nine thousand dollars, yeah, yeah, so...
Okay, so, uh, just a couple of things briefly, the, uh, berm at the Grove Country Club is coming down, very...
The crane, the crane was working when I came to the meeting tonight. Yeah, they, they're just all over the road, and it's, there's enormous crane out there.
Yeah, so, he doesn't have a lot of trucks out there, it's, it's going slowly, but they have been working on it diligently for the last, you know, week and a half, so, so that's good, good progress. Um, Harbor Chase and Arboria, we've talked about the landscaping over there. Arboria, both, uh, the Village Forester and Tallgrass Restoration have looked at that site, and both, uh, say that it's, uh, looking really good. Tallgrass, uh, is ready to sign off on that. Uh, Urban Forest Management also says that it looks good. The, I will add that the, um, property manager is working with their, uh, landscaper countryside to actually amend the soils to help keep the trees, uh, growing better.
Wow, Tallgrass, wow, cool.
The forester was gonna get that, uh, plan from them, yeah, I talked to him yesterday, but, uh, that's really good news for them.
Do they, do they remember about the roads and the, and the landscaping tied together?
It, it, they, they backed off on the roads, so, sad in the ballers to keep people from turning lust, you know, to ride on land.
But, 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 but it's getting...
What is it?
Uh, it's a Comcast issue.
It's Comcast issue?
Yes, it's, I'm almost sure now, it's, it's connected to what we have going on with the phones.
Oh, okay, you have the phones, and I'm not, I'm sorry, that, this keeps going down.
No, I, I, I just was, was thinking, when they get the, the good go from Tallgrass, do we then tell them, now you can have your rooms?
That they walked away from that. We had the discussion, and we talked about...
But, are, are they using these rooms for storage?
Yes, still, yes, and we sent...
Well, why wait to...
As of, as of, oh, gosh, um, the Philippines sent our inspectors...
It's definitely a year ago, or more. So, it's... I, I want to say that...
I think they decided, you know, that the cost was more than what their rooms said.
Uh, so, conversely, Harbor Chase, uh, is not looking good, I just don't think we disagree with. I, and there's been some turnover at their corporate office, and I was able to talk to, I don't know, the property manager, the facility manager, whoever it was today, um, but she is kind of urging us to tie it until she gets direction from corporate, so... Not sure what, all that means as far as timing, but, uh, we certainly need to keep on that. I actually, um, reached out to Athena Margas, and I said, do you have a contact with corporate or at Harbor Chase? She's the, uh, HOA president for Fairfield Village, and, uh, she let me know that she's been trying to reach somebody over at Harbor Chase for the last few months as well, because they've got, uh, their concerns, because, you know, their stormwater outlets into the Fairfield pond.
Hey, Chris, do you know anyone over there, by any chance? No? You're muted.
I'm muted, it's...
Yeah, sorry, no, I mean, I know the people inside the building, but not at corporate, their corporate's not there, right? Their corporate's somewhere else.
Yeah, I just wondered, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, thanks.
I, I, it's ironic that this is now, because I've had several conversations with people, um, about the, that being the front door, that's our front door, and it looks like an abandoned building. It's no better than, than, uh, omen, um, that were, you know, after, um, and, and I think it's time to mow it, and, and, and put some wood grass in, and, and, and tidy it up and make it look presentable, and, and almost make a trade-off with them. Um, get the grass in, put in some evergreens, and, and I, and I talked with Lori Lyman, um, who's a great landscape architect, and, and, um, she had several ideas, and, um, it just seems like it was, it's time, it, it just looks so awful.
If you can find somebody to talk to, come up with, you know, what, a solution, right?
So, I'm just trying to get ahold of whoever we need to talk to and arrange a meeting with, you know, probably Bobby and certainly Greg.
Yeah, if, if they're a, uh, if they're a senior living, I guarantee you they've got somebody in government affairs over there, so, you know, approach we take to them.
Well, we still are holding by money for, for that landscaping, and I, I, I would suggest that because it's an entrance to the town, it should, it should, it should visibly say, you're in law grow, not, you know, you're in the land of lawns and manicured bushes and trees and things like that. I would stout at, um, the, the old stadium, um, Hopper Creek, I forget what they call it now, they, they had some evening thing last weekend. That entire metroplex is native plants, it is a huge structure, corporate structure. It is total eye candy this time of year, and, and we walked through, I don't know, blocks and blocks of this place, it's like, if these people can do it, why can't Harbor Chase? It, it's, it's an, it's just an incredible property, and Jenny, you know, Jenny keeps giving the same advice. It's so bad now, yeah, you, you gotta mow it all down, burn it, start all over, but have, have Tallgrass do it, you know? There's ones that, that supervise and...
I, I, I don't wanna wait another five years for something to look half-seasoned. It's, it's looked like cracks for so many years, it's time, it's time to, to give up, give it up. I, 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 I would ask that we vote on it. Oh, of course.
Yeah, but first talk to somebody, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I've been quiet if I can, you know...
Yeah, please.
It's an entrance to the village, I get that, Bobby, to your point, I understand that, you want it manicured and kind of looking nice, but, but if you look at the rest of the thoroughfares, I mean, right up and down eighty-three, right up and down Diamond Lake Road, there are tunnels of buckthorn, so, you know, I guess from a holistic, total viewpoint of what we want the village to look like, and what that entrance looks like, I think we need to consider that, and it's eight forty-seven.
Yeah, but I, I can't talk about, what, did you say buckthorn or teasel?
Well, you could pick one. Fragmities, buckthorn, teasel, pick one.
Okay, what was your last sentence though? What was, what did you say?
It's eight forty-seven.
Time is...
Oh, eight forty-seven, okay, got it, the time is, yes, thank you, yeah. All right, let's keep us moving then, all right.
So, uh, that's, uh, what I wanted to highlight, um, if there's any questions, happy to answer those.
I only wonder, I'm a reporter. Are we rebuilding Village Hall? A, a couple of times it has come up that there, there's some planning going on, what are we doing here?
I, I don't know about any planning on building, rebuilding Village Hall, I, I've, uh, I just told President Jacob we got a bid on painting upstairs, because the roof leaks and everything up there, um...
So, just maintenance?
But, but you had a meeting...
Are you talking, are you talking the fifteen thousand that was in the budget?
No, a reference which may...
You, there was a reference, maybe, uh, Greg made a mention, reference in, in manager's report that, that, that there's some activity, the activity is really, can the subject, can the subject accommodate a change in this building? It's a, it, it, and that was the reason for putting it in the budget, was to know what we could or could not do if we did or did not want to do something.
And I, I did meet with Trustee O'Reilly, week one or week two, to, uh, talk about the history of the building, and I think even, I had conversation with President Jacob on it, of, um, potentially securing funds, uh, from the Illinois Historic Preservation, which falls under IDNR, um, to, uh, for upkeep of the building and maintenance of the building to support, but nothing that we were planning, adding architects in or doing any structural analysis or...
Yeah, I just was curious, I, there were a couple of references, and I thought, you know, I...
You didn't, you didn't know there's a baby now here?
No, I don't hang around Village Hall that often, but I, I thought it was maybe because of the ladder, you know, so, the fort is not easy.
All, all right, I'm gonna keep us moving then, right, are you, we get, um, so, end of, uh, your report? All right, so now it's time for public comment, is there anyone out there that wants to make public comment?
There's no public here.
There, uh, there, well, Ken's here, right, so, and me, um, I guess not, so, um...
I just, can I hit Senator McCann?
Oh, sure, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
Um, tomorrow I'll be meeting with the Senator, um, McCackey tomorrow in, uh, in downtown Long Grove. I had reached out to him and State Representative Boss, just to introduce myself and have a conversation and talk about priorities for the area and, and how they would come together with Long Grove's priorities. In doing so, he asked if he can meet, he and his staff asked if they can meet us in town, have coffee, and then we're gonna be going to several of the businesses in town, um, to make some introductions. He's filming a, uh, making a film about his district and he's going to highlight these places in Long Grove as part of that, so we're gonna get some good time.
Chris Boss?
Chris Boss, yeah, yeah.
Tomorrow is the tour.
No, he's not, we, we were, I'm meeting with the Senator tomorrow. We were supposed to meet with the state rep, they canceled on me today because they're doing the...
Cause they're protesting, yeah.
And we're, and we're meeting, no, we're meeting next week, myself and the state rep. So it's a good opportunity, I think, for some greater exposure for the village. I know the Senator's, uh, familiar with it. Uh, we'll be going into the confectionery at Mary's there, right?
Mary's.
And then, um, the coffee shop, the confection shop, uh, within reach. And then, uh, we're going over into Trustee O'Reilly's, uh, business and then, um, we're gonna be meeting with Jesse DeSoto as he's president of the association, so make that introduction, so...
Chris, is there any chat going on? How's he gonna get in?
Yeah, we're trying to figure out how to navigate that. It may not be him up there, it's people coming down and taking pictures and film outside, so... That's all, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
All right, um, any other items? I don't think there's any reason to go into executive session. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Okay, moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Great, Trustee Barowski.
Yes, have a great night, everybody.
Good night, Chris.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly. Um, Trustee Isho.
Hi.
And Trustee Tucci.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.